In Des Moines City Council, and Scott, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one councilman, is this on? Can you hear me? Do we need more volume? We need a little more volume. Okay. How about now? Is that better? Okay. We have one council member absent, Dan Sherman. Is there a motion to, excuse?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Tony, is there any correspondence?
Your honor, I put a whole bunch of correspondence in your box, as Councilmember Pena pointed out to me before the meeting began, but there's three letters I want to quickly bring to your attention. First one is we received notice that we received a CDBG grant for $70,000 for lighting up at the Activity Center. Local attorney and resident of Des Moines, David Gurkey, sent us an email or a letter saying he wants to partner with the city, the Arts Commission, and Key Bank to put a mural up on the new wall that they're building there on the Key Bank that's there on Marine View Drive. And then finally, Department of Ecology sent us a letter regarding the stormwater pass-through grant of $50,000 that they had given to us, and they wanted to let us know that we have satisfactory completed all the requirements for that. But I did want to read this one quick paragraph. "We are pleased to have a partner in helping you accomplish," we are pleased to have been a partner in helping you accomplish this project by providing $50,000 from the Local Toxics Control Act. All indications point to a project that was accomplished with integrity and high professional standards. This grant project has officially been closed out." So, Grant, I think I gave a copy of this letter to you and Lauren, just to let your staff know. Job well done.
Great. Thank you. At this time, we welcome comments from the public. As your name is called, would you please come over to the podium to my right, state your full name and address for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes or under. We have Dennis Sucey. Good evening, Dennis.
I live at 1912 South 254th Place here in Des Moines. And tonight, I'm speaking to you in my role as Chair of the Des Moines Art Commission. I'm here to make one last pitch to request some specific staff funding for the Arts Commission for this upcoming 2011 year. Last year, we got staff support covered through an NEA grant, which was written and submitted by Nick, and unfortunately, that grant was not available for us coming here into 2011. About two years ago, the Arts Commission received about $15,000 from the city, and that was enough flexibility and revenue at that time in the Parks Department budget to cover staff needs approximately two years ago. However, unlike other parks and recreation programs, the Arts Commission budget does not generate excess revenues to contribute to staff overhead. Patrice had sent an email to Tony dated about December 9th outlining the total cost of staff support for the current Arts Commission programs and projects, not including indirect costs for 2009, 2010, and that total came to $17,313.67. When the Arts Commission submitted its initial budget for 2011, we did not have that information at that time, but we did feel that staff support was needed and is needed. Our budget request for this year included an additional $7,000 to help begin to cover the staff support that we feel we need for the program. So we basically asked for approximately the same amount of program, a project budget of $7,500, but on top of that, we asked for approximately $7,000 more for staff support. We're anticipating that this year, we'll receive $7,500 in program project grant money from the Four Culture Program also, and so that would bring the program project funds up to about $15,000 for us. And then with that, we plan to do our four summer concerts in the Beach Park, the three Waterland Music Series, redo the Shakespeare in the Park Program in July, host the Second Annual Poverty Bay Arts Festival, which the date is set now for September 24th in the Des Moines Marina District, and then other projects that we normally include in that type of thing, as Tony pointed out tonight, working on potential new mural projects. We have given funds in the past to a program called Flute Quest. We also have donated some funds for the publicity for the Des Moines Tree Lighting. We are in the process of working on a proposed project with Mount Rainier High School for our community arts and ethnic event, hopefully here in April. We do what's called some site-specific performances with the Four Culture Program, and we normally use that with the, we used it last year with the Poverty Bay Arts Festival type of thing. We're hoping to support the opening of the Beach Park Auditorium in 2011, and we're looking into the concept of possibly coordinating an arts forum. And then the remaining of the $15,000 that we have goes to cover our marketing supplies and other things that we need, type of thing. Besides the $7,500 we hope to receive in project funds from Four Culture and potentially $7,500 from the city, we have plans to raise additional revenues for ourselves. We feel that the Poverty Bay Arts Festival program sponsorships should bring in around $2,300, possibly even higher. We do sponsorship programs called Friends of the Arts and additional donations, and we hope to bring in about $2,500 from that. And then through ticket and refreshment sales, we hope to bring in about $1,000. And then we'll be seeking support from the Rotary of Des Moines for sponsorship for the Shakespearean play in some of the summer concerts again this year to the tune of $1,500. We really believe that the arts programs do bring additional revenue to the city. We have done some survey with the Des Moines businesses and the artists who participated in the Poverty Bay Arts Festival, and they said that that event alone brought in a number of additional people to the city for that event and also into their shops. The merchants have told us that this program also brought in new customers to their businesses, type of thing. And as I have mentioned before, we received over $900 in donation from doing the Shakespeare in the Park Program. So what we're concerned about, I think, from the Arts Festival is that it's becoming very difficult to continue the quality arts programming we've been able to offer today without staff support. And we really believe that without staff support, in the long run, we're afraid that the quality of the arts programming will diminish here in the city as well. And we realize that as the City Council, that you're very supportive of the staffing for the Parks Department, for the senior center programs, and know that that staff is an important aspect of that, those programs. And we just hope too, that when you consider in your final budget considerations, that potentially being able to provide some staff support in our budget for next year as well.
Thank you, Sucey. Tony, did you have something you want to add to this?
Yeah, I want to comment just for a moment on the email that Mr. Sucey talked about. I did get that from Patrice, and I asked Lori to sit down with Patrice and work through some of the numbers so we can understand exactly what they mean. So it's a little unusual out of order, but I'd like Lori to come up and-
That'd be fine.
-talk a little bit about that.
Our last council meeting that we are addressing is, there was quite a bit of confusion as to what was actually being requested.
Right, sure. All right. In particular, what that $17,000 really is?
Lori Erickson, Assistant City Manager. Good evening, Council, Mayor Schechler. I did speak with Patrice. She wasn't able to be here tonight, and she asked me to speak on her behalf if there were any questions. The $17,000 that we're talking about for staff support includes things like writing the contracts, taking care of the insurance, taking ticket sales, answering questions, those types of things, as well as staff support at the individual events. Patrice is able to absorb within her budget the things like writing the contract, providing the insurance, taking the tickets, answering the questions, the daily office administrative type support that the Arts Commission enjoys. She can absorb within the budget and the people who are currently working. The $7,000 would specifically cover the salary and benefits portion for a person to be onsite at every Arts Commission event that there needs to be. That would be the person who does the setup, the take-down, and kind of the go-to person. Without that $7,000, if there happened to be somebody on, working in the Parks Department that could assist them, there would be somebody there. If there wasn't, if there wasn't anybody on duty, it would be up to the Arts Commission and their staff of volunteers to take care of those events, which, as the gentleman was saying, would probably cause them to maybe decrease the number of events that they would be able to support.
So that $17,000 was her estimate for the 2009 support, and about $10,000 of that was just her estimation of the amount of time staff spent while on their normal duties, on their normal duty hours, handling things for the Arts Commission. The other $7,500 is the amount that was spent being onsite at each event. That amount isn't available in her budget this year, and the Arts Commission is asking that we put that amount into Patrice's budget so she does have the staff to be there onsite.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
That figure was $7,000?
$7,500.
$7,500.
Correct.
It's between that $7,000 and $7,500.
We probably could make $7,000 work.
I think it was at $6,963.13.
Okay. Yes, Melissa?
Yes, this is getting down into the weeds. So in the preliminary budget, would that be just increasing the salaries and wages line item, $7,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Lori. Is there anyone who, thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone who did not sign up that would like to address the council at this time? Ma'am? Were you here when the rules were, okay, were you here when I announced the rules of speaking? Because if you weren't, I'd go over it again. Okay. When you come up here to our podium here, please state your name and address for the record, and limit comments to three minutes or under. Okay?
My name is DeeDee Law, and I live at 19909 Marine View Drive, Normandy Park. So this is concerning Rosie, the dog that, as you know, was shot and killed by your police officers on November 9th. There are a lot of people that are involved in this that do not live in Seattle, thousands actually, that cannot be at the town meetings here. So a lot of them have asked that people that do live here, they speak on their behalf. So that's what I'm going to do, just very short. This is from Trudy Davidson. "The four shots heard around the world. On November 7th, 2010," excuse me, finding a cold, "in Des Moines, Washington, four shots were fired from the Colt M4 rifle of a police officer. The shots killed an innocent Newfoundland dog named Rosie. Make no mistake, these shots were heard around the world. To date, nearly 5,500 signatures from residents of every continent except Antarctica have been added to a petition expressing outrage and demanding justice for Rosie. Please take a moment to read through the list of countries from where these signatures came, and know literally, thousands of eyes are on your community. Thank you." And here's a list of the countries.
Thank you very much.
Hope you remember this dog. It could have been yours.
Okay, at this time, is there anyone else that wishes to speak that did not sign up? This time, we'll go ahead with board and committee reports and councilman comments, and as usual, start with Carmen.
This Tuesday, we had a Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting, and the topics were an economic development strategy overview, which was held by Marion Yoshino, a brief overview of King County Transfer of Development Rights, which is a TDR program, where, I think that she will probably come in front of the council to explain it herself. You can take development rights, Tony, can you help me with this?
She's referring to a program called Transfer Development Rights, where you can transfer density that is allowed in a rural area outside of the urban growth boundary, and if the property owner agrees not to build on it after having the density purchased by a developer, then a receiving city, say one that's in the urban growth boundary like Des Moines, can agree to accept additional density above and beyond what it allows in its zoning code in order to keep the rural areas rural and keep density where the Growth Management Act is trying to keep it. So it is a program that is available. It's something that is very desirable for some developers to use, and you can use it to spur development in areas, possibly use it as a, to allow bonus height, say in Pacific Ridge, bonus density in Pacific Ridge or downtown, even additional heights downtown if that's the way council wants to do it. We've been in discussions with a gentleman at King County who manages the program, and he's agreed to come to the January 13th council meeting and give a short presentation on it if that's all right with the mayor and council.
We also discussed sign codes and possible need to make them a little bit different than they are to remove some limitations that are difficult for businesses. That was essentially the meeting this time.
Dave?
Yeah. No committee reports, but last Friday, I had the pleasure of attending two volunteer recognition events. The first was in the morning for the seniors, and it's amazing to see, there had to be in excess of 100 volunteers at the senior center who have been recognized for the hours that they contribute to our senior programs. And between staff and the volunteers, what they put on, it was a great event. And I had good conversation. There were a number of people who were actually here visiting from Burien, who were comparing and contrasting our senior program with a number of the surrounding communities, including their own, and were appalled at how Burien's is and a few of the others, and really complimented us on the way that our program is run and the facility and everything else. And I think a lot of that has to go with our Parks and Rec Director, our staff, and Sue Patton, who everybody commented on. The other volunteer recognition event was for the farmer's market. That was the same night, last Friday night, and again, in excess of 100 people there, and a great event, just very relaxed. You had farmers there, you had sponsors there, you had, I mean, it was across the board. The mix of the people were there. It was, you know, everybody commented about the same thing, which is how important the market is to the city. You know, if there's anything that's helped bring people together, particularly during the months when we actually have some sun, I guess a little bit of rain on the day that they had the chili cook-off, but is, has been the market. And I think that's something we can take a lot of pride in and be happy about, and, you know, the farmers are looking forward to being back this next year, and it just, it was a great, once again, another great event that occurred here in the city, and recognizing the people who do a lot to make, you know, make the city someplace we want to live, so.
Could I piggyback just one comment?
Go ahead, Carmen.
Last year, and last year, I'm not talking about the farmer's market, someone took the number of people who volunteered and all the hours and determined that if they had been paid staff, the city would have had another $200,000 worth of expenses. What they do for us is remarkable.
I think that may be a very conservative figure, too.
Yes, and it's not even counting all the volunteers at the market.
Right. Yeah, I don't think everyone quite understands sometimes how valuable they are, because a lot of these events would never take place if it wasn't for the volunteers.
Right.
Melissa?
No report.
Matt?
No report.
Scott?
No report.
Okay. I have one, referencing the dog that was shot here by the name of Rosie. As you know, we've been receiving a lot of emails, I know I personally have, as to what the status is, and staff has come back with a report on the two investigations that were done, both internally and through the King County Prosecutor's Office, so I have a statement to make on that. "At the November 18th meeting of the Des Moines City Council, we announced that we had requested that the King County Prosecuting Attorney's Office conduct a criminal culpability review of the incident that resulted in the death of Rosie the dog. Tonight, I am letting you know that we have received a finding from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. In their letter to us, the Prosecutor's Office stated that the King County Prosecuting Office, Attorney's Office has concluded that the three police officers involved in the shooting death of Rosie did not commit either a felony offense under state statute or a criminal violation under the King County Code. The Des Moines Police Department concluded a complete and thorough investigation of this matter, which allowed us to reach our legal conclusion in this case." Unquote. "We have provided a copy of the investigation and a prosecuting attorney's letter to the Wrights, which is Rosie's family, and we will be posting both on the city's website tomorrow. The city's website address is www.demoinewa.gov." I'll repeat that. The city will now proceed with a shooting review of the incident to determine if policy was followed. We will also look to see if we should implement any changes to our policy, methods, or equipment to improve our response to such situations. We anticipate this will take two to three weeks to complete. In their letter, the King County Prosecuting Attorney's Office ended by saying, quote, 'Our conclusion is not meant to minimize the loss suffered by the Wright family. We understand that they have cared for the dog and that the death has been a tremendous impact on them. We are sorry for the loss they suffered.'" Unquote. "Please know that the Des Moines City Council and the Des Moines Police Department share this sentiment." And that concludes the statement. Tony, is there any admin reports?
No, Your Honor.
This time, I'll ask the city clerk to read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is the approval of minutes. The motion is to approve the November 18th, 2010 meeting minutes and the minutes of the special meeting to hold an executive session on November 18th, 2010. Second item is surplus of vehicles. The motion is to surplus the following six Police Crown Victoria vehicles, all of which have over 100,000 miles, and further to authorize the city manager to dispose of set equipment to FIC Inc. or Trade of Services for setting up four new police vehicles or to dispose of by auction to the highest bidder. I request your permission to not read these numbers.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't think anybody notes the VIN numbers, if that's what you're getting at.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
There's six of them and lots of numbers. And that, Your Honor, concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item? Is there anyone that wishes to make a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous? Next is item of old business, which is the adoption of the CIP resolution.
Your Honor?
Oh, do we, I'm sorry. That is correct. We do have a request by the city staff to have a executive session.
Correct.
And the purpose of that is, again-
To discuss both potential litigation, potential litigation, and labor negotiations.
Okay. We'll call a 20-minute recess for that. Next item is, first item of old business, which is the adoption of the CIP resolution. Tony, who do you have staff?
Well, I got Paula here, but I'll just start by saying at the meeting last week, we talked about a fix to the MCI that would take us out of that negative territory for the ending fund balance when you considered how much we were supposed to have in reserved ending fund balance. I asked Paula to run those numbers, make sure she was comfortable with them, and looks like the fix that we came up with seems to work.
Yes.
Good evening, Paula.
Good evening.
So the rest, and then we adjusted the street CIP a little bit, so for the most part, we think it reflects all your direction, and we're here to answer questions.
Counselors? Start with Scott.
On, so on the spreadsheets, there's one that's numbered four of seven.
Is that the one with the debt service?
Well, it starts debt service and then have us reserve fund balance.
Okay.
This King County Parks levy, $153,000, that just carries through the six years, wasn't that allocated to some?
Which items, Scott? Oh, I see.
Well, it's, the Parks levy is supposed to be used, I think, for the trail, trails.
Yep.
And we have the, is it the Barnes Creek Trail that we were going to acquire property using those funds?
I believe that's what that is.
And that's funded in the transportation CIP.
We do have transfers over in 11 and 12 of 100,000, 200,000 respectively.
Well, that's, that's because it's money in the bank, so it's not additive, it's just money in the bank, same amount, I think. Well, yeah, because that's how much the ending fund is reserved. Matt's asking why it's the same amount each year, or at least at the end column, it doesn't add like many of the other things, but I'm just saying because that's bank balance, not a recurring revenue.
You mean it should be zero after 2011?
Well, no, what I'm guessing is, of all the money that we've received from the King County Parks levy, there's 153,000 that hasn't been designated for any park, any trail improvement, because that's just not enough to do it all, do something.
Right, but I think what Scott's question is, the implication is that we're getting 153 each year, when in fact, we're getting, we have 153 that we're just carrying, which should be part of the ending fund balance, so it wouldn't show up each year, it would just be carried forward until it's expended.
Well, this is, this is the fund balance line.
Right.
So it's just the same amount each year because we-
But why are we carrying it?
Because we haven't designated it for use anywhere.
So why haven't we designated it to the piece of land between 216th and 220th that we're acquiring of the 509 right-of-way that we're showing Drainage Improvements Road Trail? I mean, there's a piece of land we can put a trail on, or there's a piece of land we can buy with that money.
That was the intent.
So, because we, because I don't think we have, well, man.
Just seemed odd to me that that money was sitting there.
Understood.
Anyone else? Okay. Anybody care to make a motion?
I don't, I don't know what I want to do.
Dave?
I move to adopt draft resolution number 10-200 approving the city of Des Moines, 2011, 2016- I move to adopt draft resolution number 10-200 approving the City of Des Moines' 2011-2016 capital improvement plan.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Scott?
A couple of weeks ago, I said I was going to vote against this because it... I would characterize it as a one-year plan, not a six-year plan. You know, we know what we're going to do next year, but in the next five years, we've got projects listed that are going to happen without a clue of where money is going to come from, and it's large pieces of money that we don't have a clue. So, we really haven't done what GMA says we need to do, which is balance our capital projects with the funds that are available. So, I can't support it.
Dave?
Yeah. I'm willing to support it because we look at this every year based upon what the reality is in terms of what money comes in or doesn't come in, you know? I heard an optimistic little thing on the radio this morning about the residential market beginning to pick up, but I suspect that's back east and not out west. And, you know, so the real estate excise taxes we collect drives certain things, the gas taxes we collect drives certain things, the grants we get drive certain things. We've had to take money, ironically, it used to be that we would take X amount out of our general fund, put it in the municipal investment fund every year, and we stopped that because of, out of financial necessity. And because of ending fund balance, we're essentially having to go back and take money out of the general fund just to make it whole. I think we're not quite at the point where we have to make some decisions on whether or not we surrender grant money that we receive relative to projects we have simply because there's no way to be able to match it. I think it's coming up, though, in short order, Scott. I think there's things that we need to do that we're not able to do, you know, minor things like paving and maintaining our roads for crying out loud, but without some sort of dedicated funding source, knowing it's coming in, we're stuck. Now, if some of the projects we hope are going to happen come through, there may be some one-time monies late next year, into the next year or two, which allows us to make some one-time decisions, take one-time monies and commit them to one-time projects. That may help us out on some of these things. You know, one of the loans expires in 2013 for the design work on the Gateway Project is an example. That's going to free up some funds. And we're going to have to have more thorough discussion in terms of the relationship between the CIP and the general fund, in terms of how we, you know, the choices we make in terms of what we're able to sustain and what we're not. But I think for a year, I think this gets us there. The tough decisions still lie ahead, but I think that this does a good job of looking at what we do have coming in and making realistic assumptions about it, and for that reason, I'm willing to support it.
Anyone else? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is the 2011 budget ordinance. Paula, are you on board on that one?
Well, I updated myself of the changes that the city manager proposed. It looks like all the labor groups will receive their COLAs, and there are no furloughs due to the fact that the two labor groups, the non-reps and the Teamsters, are willing to go to the new healthcare plan, which will...
Would also mean the exempts and the...
And the exempts, yes.
Which...
And directors. So, we have about 150,000 in savings there. What I see, though, is that we're still relying on one-time money to balance the budget.
And one-time actions to balance the budget.
Yes, and one-time actions.
Deferring our computer and equipment.
Deferring the equipment replacement, again. So, that's council's decision on where we are.
One small slice of good news. If you look at the attachment to the ordinance that looks like this, this is, this is the actual figures for each fund that we have. It shows you the expenditures, the ending fund balance, beginning fund balance, and for the Police Restoration Services Fund, Fund Number 112. You go over and you see the beginning fund balance of 587,000. Originally, we had that in the budget at 377, but with some savings from not spending as much on overtime and the expense for dispatch services and having a vacant position or two in there, we've been able to move up that ending fund balance for this year, meaning next year they start out with more, and at the end of the year, they'll have a little bit more in there than we had projected.
And Tony has advised me, too, and I did look at our cash flow for Police Department. At least, they'll have some savings of 200,000 that is not reflected in this budget ordinance in the beginning fund balance. It looks like we're trending that way, so there's another 200,000 that we reduce that shortfall in our balancing our budget.
And that's money in the Police Department budget, and because of the levy-lid lift restrictions, that 200,000 savings there will essentially be a restricted part of the fund balance, and we will have to spend that on Police Department issues over the next year, couple of years.
Melissa?
Can those funds in any way be used to restore the traffic patrol unit?
They could be.
Is that something that would be a good expenditure for the department, or does the department have a better rec...
I think Chief O'Leary and I can talk about that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Dave?
Yeah, Tony, you didn't mention this memo from Puget Sound Clean Air Agency indicating what our assessment is going to be for this next year at 13,312 dollars.
Yes.
Is that within the budget?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it's in the budget.
We, there's a, there's a...
Is it higher?
There's a section of the general fund called...
I think a little bit.
Do...
Memberships, using memberships, and I believe we discussed it when we presented the budget, it was like 500 dollars more, something like that.
Okay.
So, than what it was last year.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got set aside probably.
I didn't know they had changed the numbers on this, so that's why I was asking.
Anyone else? Okay, Carmen?
I guess I need some help in knowing where, but I would like to see if we can put the 7,000 dollars into the Parks and Recs support of the Arts Commission.
I would suggest that we have a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance, and then you would make an amending motion to add that amount coming out of fund balance.
Coming out of?
Fund balance.
Ending fund balance.
So, you're recommending that the ordinance be passed first and then?
No, that a motion is seconded made to adopt the ordinance before you take the final vote, and Councilmember Scott can make an amending motion.
Have it in front of us.
But you've got to have something on the table, in front of you to act on.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to make a discussion? Okay. So, there's, who made the motion?
No one's made a motion.
Nobody made that motion. Okay, so is there anyone willing to make a motion at this time?
Well, I'm no good at this, but I move to adopt draft ordinance number 10-198 adopting the final budget for the City of Des Moines, Washington for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2011.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion?
Now would be the time to make an amendment.
Carmen?
Now I would like to make an amendment to my own motion that we add an item which puts 7,000 dollars in the fund balance for the purpose of supporting the Arts Commission's support staff needs.
So, that would be 7,000 out of the fund balance into the Park and Recreation Budget to hand, to support the Arts Commission?
Yes.
Okay. On the amendment, I'll second it. Discussion? Matt?
You know, one of the things that I would, and I've enjoyed some of the things that the Arts Commission's done, I just want to make sure that as they go forward with their events, that they are looking at generating revenues, hopefully, you know, not... I guess what I'm trying to say is, when they gained 900 dollars on the Shakespeare in the Park and so forth, I think that was a good thing, but probably, I don't know what the expenses were, but they should have the intent when they do things to try and generate revenues so they can continually have a reserve to draw on and do the next thing. I think it's a good thing for the council to see these events because I think it is in the best interest of the community, but I really want to work with these entities to make sure that they understand that they need to come up with a sustaining model.
Well put, Matt. Carmen?
I'm the council liaison to the Arts Commission, and I can tell you from the figures and pages and pages of things that they have been involved in doing for the city. It's an amazing amount of time and talent and effort on the part of less than a dozen people, sometimes as few as eight people. They have gone after grants and gotten them. They have gone out after supporters and gotten small donations from a variety of businesses. They've tried to bring in funds from as many of their events as they can and have been successful. They also have provided free entertainment for people in our parks. That's been a very fine thing to do during these bad economic times, but one of the biggest things they are is helping economic development. And their September 25th event, when they had 29 businesses in town with an arts activity going on in each, and people drawn to town who normally wouldn't be here. I was at their meeting yesterday, and various members were mentioning, one person had four new customers after that day. Another person was thrilled that they had so many new people in their store. They're doing more than just trying to make their way financially. They're helping the city and the businesses in the city in ways that are worth a lot, and I think they need to have the continued level of support that we've given them in the past.
Okay.
One of their primary grants that helped last year has disappeared this year, so it's even more important that they don't lose support from the staff as well.
Thank you, Carmen. Anyone else? Okay. Scott? No. All right. All in favor of the amendment? Please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Getting to the main motion, any further discussion on the main motion? Dave, then Scott.
I've been wrestling with the budget for a number of weeks now, and up until tonight, I wasn't going to support it. But I am going to support it, and I'm going to support it for the reason that I supported this year's budget last year. And it's because of the employees that work for our city. You know, they've, they've stepped up to help put us on the right direction in terms of sustainability. I wish I could say that for all of the employees of the city, but I can say that for the bulk of the employees in the city. And because of that, I'm going to support the budget.
Thank you, Dave. Again, that was very well put. Scott?
I can't support this budget for a couple of reasons. The largest is that it's balanced by an assumed million-dollar revenue from a project that may or may not happen. That's sort of like my, doing my home budget based on whatever gambling winnings I might make on, you know, on that, on a lottery ticket or something. It's not responsible. Now, plus, we don't have a cash flow plan that matches this revenue. The budget is a 12-month expenditure plan, and we're guessing this revenue may come in in June. So, if it doesn't come in in June, we will already have spent half that money in a 12-month expenditure plan, so we'll be, you know, if we were budgeting it for one-time things based on a council contingency, that we wouldn't authorize the expenditures in the budget until the money was here. I could understand that. But this is paying salaries for the first six months that if that money doesn't show up, we're going to be underwater by the end of the year, and that's not responsible. The other thing is the imbalance between the accounting of the levy-lid lift funds and the general fund. There's a number of things in here where we're transferring levy-lid, well, transferring general fund money to levy-lids-to-lift fund, and we were just told it's going to have a very big balance. I understand the state statute that applied that says, if you do levy-lid lift funding with voter approval, that you can't supplant existing revenues that are spent on things by this new revenue. The statute does not contemplate half of your other revenues drying up, you know? We didn't supplant our existing Police Department with the revenue from the levy-lid lift, but a lot of other money went away, but we're still budgeting every dollar that was being spent before for police, still for police. So, we're robbing every other program we have because of the levy-lid lift money, carrying a high balance in the levy-lid lift fund as an outcome of that. And that doesn't seem prudent either, and I would think we could have made justifications to not still be spending the same dollar amount for police because so many of our other revenues have dried up. Or at least, I would have been willing to attempt that and let the auditor tell us we were wrong because that would have been a better way to deal with the budget deficit than relying on one-time money that may not occur. So, you know, I'm not saying there's any expenditures here that we don't want, but we don't have a revenue plan to support it, and that's the problem. So, I can't vote in favor of it.
Tony, briefly, please.
In regards to the levy-lid lift, there was, I did contemplate if we saved money in the Police Department budget through concessions from the Guild, that those savings would then go over to the levy-lid lift. None of that materialized. You do see that on here, but it's not part of the recommendation. Second, the non-supplanting requirement clearly says, from what we've seen, that your base budget year is how much you must spend in your general fund, and then you must spend all the rest in the levy-lid lift for police. That's what we have budgeted here. And then, third, the levy-lid lift will start out with a healthier fund balance next year than we had anticipated, but by the end of the year, what's left in there, combined with what we anticipate getting in 2012, will not be enough to pay for everything that we are currently budgeting in the levy-lid lift unless we leave some positions vacant.
Okay. End. Anyone else? Okay. Dave, I'm sorry, didn't see you.
Well, you know, we have been balancing things on a lot of one-time money, Scott, you're right, which is why I normally wouldn't support a budget like this. But, you know, I think, I think there's a number of people who've been making efforts to try and make sure that we do have businesses coming to town here and wanting to invest in town here, and that things are going to happen here, and that the council's taking steps to make that happen. And one of those, I believe, is going to be the efforts that Bob made in terms of, somebody was going to build a hotel in Tacoma and bringing it here. And I think we're going to see that. In terms of timing and cash flow, yeah, but you know what? We've been having cash flow problems for the last decade. This isn't something new. It's gotten worse over the last couple of years because we've had our property tax revenue collections go, actually go down, and our utility tax collections actually go down. Someone had told me either of those would have declined or said they were crazy two years ago, but it has happened. And, yeah, it's a one-time thing, and we may be looking at a bigger nut to crack a year from now, but I don't think that's the case. I think in this particular situation, I think that something good is going to happen this year, and I think it's about time something good happened here. And I... And I, but I think it took a lot of effort to make sure that something good was going to happen, and we need to continue to make sure that other good things are going to happen as well. So, I understand your concern, I share your concern, but I think in this particular case, I feel more confident than I have in other one-time projected projects that have been assumed in prior budgets.
I'm going to take what you just said and go a step further with it. For years now, yes, the city council, not this seated city council, but city councils for Des Moines have been weighing out the one-time funds versus sustainability. There's no question in my mind that sustainability is the only way to go, and it's what we all must be working very, very difficult, very hard to achieve. Thank you for noting what I did, Dave, I appreciate that, but I'm going to take again a step further. I believe for the first time in my 16 years, that we now have a city council seated that is taking the sustainability issue very, very seriously. The majority of you are going out of your way to try to bring new revenue into this city, and even before I left, Melissa called me and told me about an idea that she had or something she was looking into. This council is working very, very hard towards that end, and I am feeling very good about, number one, let's take the Artemis Hotel, I'm going to bet you a lunch to the place of your choice that that comes through, and I'm going to, and I'll bet with anybody else that that 89 acres up there will get developed, and I'm willing to bet anyone that that 11 acres is going to get developed, and I'm willing to bet anyone that eventually downtown is going to have a new look, and it's going to be successful too. I think we're on the road to sustainability, we're not there yet, but I think through the efforts of this council, at least the majority of the people in this council, that will be reached, and I don't think it's that far out, I honestly don't. I think we've got some good things working for us right now, and there's going to be kind of a snowball effect from it, I truly believe it. So, so I'm defending the council on this issue. Granted, we're passing another budget, it does look at one-time funds, but I don't believe that that is the way it's going to be for many more years, contrary to what I've seen a lot of people say. So, that having been said, is there anyone else that wishes to make a comment before we pass this? All those in favor of the main motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
It's a little longer than what was in the-
Yeah, all right, you got it right there? Okay. Draft ordinance number 10-198 is an ordinance of the City of Des Moines, Washington, adopting the final budget for the City of Des Moines, Washington for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2011. In summary form, ratifying and confirming revenues and expenditures previously implemented for fiscal year 2010, as such revenues and expenditures form the basis for development of the budget for fiscal year 2011, approving revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2011, and temporarily suspending the effect of any ordinance code provision or other city requirement with which the funds adjustments and transfers proposed by the city manager for the 2010 budget might be inconsistent. Yeah, you're right, that was a real interesting one. Okay, council, that ends our meeting for the evening, thank you very much. Our next, well, because we're early, January what, 6th, okay, I'll need a motion to adjourn, our next meeting will be on January 6th. I wish you all a very wonderful, happy holiday season and a happy new year, and hopefully we'll be in touch before that 2011 creeps up on us. Okay? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.